It's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. You can pray with me. Father, thank you for the state. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and do the city's work. Father, we just pray that you be among us. Father, that you would watch over our first responders. Father, keep them safe. And Father, we just pray for your wisdom. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Councilmember Gonzalez will lead us in the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
May he see. Okay, we have no proclamations or awards or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. I believe we have a couple of items that we wanted to remove.
D, E, J, and K.
Okay, motion to remove those. We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of removing these four items, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Now we move to the rest of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second for the rest of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go to the items that are still on the consent agenda. Item D, consider accepting funds in the form of equipment from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for Odessa Fire and Rescue. Chief Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. This item D is going to be for consider accepting funding in the form of equipment from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. What they have done is they improved funding for the purchase of equipment to include the Freddie the Fire Truck with accessories for Odessa Fire Rescue. This equipment will be replacing the outdated equipment that we have that's obsolete, and it'll be used by Fire Marshal's Office for public education. And we do have, if I can call in the audience, Chris Prickett. He's the operations supervisor here at the Odessa store. I'm sure he made it in this evening.
There he is. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At our Firehouse Subs locations, we have the saying, "The Public Safety Foundation is who we are. Maintenance Subs is just what we do." That's a very small part of our operation. We're so privileged and honored to be a part of Odessa community. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, well, entertain a motion to approve. You have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, consider accepting donation from the Ector County Energy Center, LLC, in appropriating said funds to the Odessa Fire and Rescue. Chief Alvarez.
Yes, sir. Again, Mayor, Council, this is to consider accepting donation. It's from the Ector County Energy Center, and they're appropriating said funds to Odessa Fire Rescue. The donation is an amount of $2,500, and what we use this funding is to buy any additional equipments that we may not have funded before. We do have Chris Moore that we asked to step forward, and he's from Inverge. He's the operations or maintenance manager.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Item J, consider a resolution authorizing the City of Odessa Police Department to accept a 2017 Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant. Chief Kirk.
Good evening. Earlier this year, we were, we asked for permission to apply for this grant, and we were awarded a little over $95,000 from the Office of the Governor to supply our officers with rifle-resistant vests. This grant, this money, will allow us to purchase rifle-resistant vests for all of our patrols and our SWAT team and our tactical medics which work for the fire department.
That's a no matter.
That's a no matter. But there is no cash match with this, so this is...
That's great, and I want to thank you for doing that. I know it takes a lot of work, fun for a grant, and I just want to say thank you, and I'm just thrilled that we received this. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kirk.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Item K, consider annual purchases of refuge containers and lids. Phil.
Evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item is our annual purchase of refuge containers for solid waste. This agenda item would be purchasing containers from Rolloffs USA, which is a Buy Board Cooperative vendor. This item is for 150 universal lids, 100 three-yard containers, and 75 four-yard containers. The total purchase price is $99,200.
You know, I don't think our citizens realize how much it costs us to have some of those containers out there for us to use. And I think it's really important to educate us so that we know some of the costs of the city. So thank you for that.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Phil. Next, we'll move to other council actions under public hearings. We will open the public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Beaton Bow Homes. Mr. Rindley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council approved this request on the first reading back on January the 23rd of this year. The property involved in the request is located northwest of the intersection of 87th Street and East Loop 338. The site is currently designated future development. It is vacant, and land use in this area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant in the case and the property owner is Beaton Bow Homes. The purpose of the original zoning request would facilitate the development of approximately 166 acres to a single-family residential use. This would incorporate approximately 899 lots that have an average size of a little over 6,000 square feet, and also incorporate development of retail use adjacent to East Loop 338. And the projected build-out for this development is four to four-and-a-half years. Site plan approval will be necessary to establish development standards prior to any development on this property. The area is located in the northern area of the city's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The zoning requested for the site and the proposed development design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways with intended land use taken into context for consideration. Traffic engineering has stated that the preliminary design and traffic flow down to 91st Street and up to 100th after Loop 338 will accommodate anticipated traffic loads and patterns. And the proposed retail zoning adjacent to Loop 338 is an appropriate land use adjacent to a major thoroughfare. And attention will be given to design standards and buffering requirements to protect the integrity of the adjoining residential development. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the hearing for anyone who would like to address council on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Still moved? We have a motion and a second. Do you need discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item two, open up public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Beaton Bow Homes. Mr. Rindley.
Yes, sir. This property is actually on the opposite end of the development of Beaton Bow Homes up in the north part of the city. The property involved in the request is located southeast of the intersection of East 91st Street and Rainbow Drive. This site is currently zoned single-family three. It's also zoned planned development, single-family surface drainage, and designated future development, approximately five acres of the site. This site is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of residential development and vacant land. And as stated previously, the applicant and the property owner is Beaton Bow Homes. And the purpose of the various zoning requests in this, for this property, would facilitate development of 84 single-family lots that have an average size of a little over 7,360 square feet. These lots would incorporate an enhanced flexibility for design standards and also for possibilities related to building setbacks and lot coverages. The area is located in the northern part of the city's land use map. This area is considered one of the main areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed development is intended to be a quality new neighborhood that will maintain long-term value through the attention to design and neighborhood amenities. This request is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to come in on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Can you just give us your name and your address?
Okay. I'm Dottie Chavez, and I am, my address? 822 San Simone, Odessa. What is our, what is your commitment to building parks along with the new residential?
This area, this area, and through here right behind where this, this is, in the future, will incorporate some sort of recreational type facility into here.
And that's your own doing, not a requirement from the city?
No, that's from Beaton Bow. That's their, I'm not associated with Beaton Bow.
Right. From the, I mean, from the builder, sorry. But anyway, okay. We don't require anything from all those new residential, no?
Not at this time. We encourage it, and we, and trust me, I'm badgering them. If you can ask Bobby, he's sitting in the audience, so he can tell you that I do that.
I would just like to see that incorporated, which new, how many?
Beaton Bow has done a really good job out there.
I know it's voluntary.
Doing it voluntary, but I agree with you. We are moving towards having...
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this agenda item?
Sir, five men.
Yes, sir. Could you just give us your name and your address?
Yes, sir.
My name is Alex Aguirre. I live on 9032 Peppergrass Avenue. And so I was worried about on 91st Street, how the loop goes from 385, or 91st Street attaches to 385, and it's going to attach to the loop as well. So there's going to be an increase of traffic flow right there. Are we going to do anything to protect the homes that are currently there? Maybe build a brick wall or anything to do with the traffic there? Because I mean, there's going to be a significant increase in traffic through that area.
You see, it's not a straight shot. What we're doing in order to contain the traffic, you'll see that it has a curve aspect to it, kind of follow the icon coming around this nature and through here, so it's not just a straight shot coming through. And that's what we're doing on that, and there will be some other aspects taken into account for future development further to the east. That's not, that hadn't been finalized yet. That will be some traffic controls and taken into account there for traffic on 91st Street.
Because we don't understand if there's going to be some commercial development right there at the end of 91st Street towards the loop?
Oh, the loop, yes.
And so there's going to be a frontage road opening to the loop right there?
The main traffic flow will be out on the loop. It won't be back to the, in that...
Correct, but there'll still be a frontage road connecting the two roads, right, 91st and the 385, I mean, the loop?
Yeah, there will be a frontage road.
So, I mean, from the highway into Highway 385 all the way to the loop, that's going to be the connection point. And as we all know how traffic is out here, I mean, people are going to be using that, zipping through there all the time. And I mean, they're really do it, you know, and they go cut over to Evans to get wherever they need to. So, I mean, I live right at the end of 91st Street, and that, my property back, that's up to right there to that land you guys are going to fix and open up, so...
A lot of what's going to happen, and also to address to the council on this also, is to the north, and it doesn't show on this map, to the north is 100th Street. 100th Street is designed to be the traffic flow road between, in this area. I think Mike and the mayor from MPO, we talked about 100 would be the main traffic flow east and west in this area, 187th Street. So 91st will be...
It will not be the main, but it still will be a large vein between the two. So what I was hoping is, because I live right there, you know, all we have is wood fence, and we've seen on the news where there's vehicles that, you know, for whatever reason, they break into houses. Could we have the developer build us a brick and wire fence protecting us from the road? I mean, I know the speed limit is going to be low, but it's going to be about 40, 45 miles an hour there, 35?
I don't know. The engineer will have to...
I mean, that's still significant speed, too. I mean, and like you guys said, it's a pretty big road, so it's going to be, anything like Evans is going to be a four-lane road. So I mean, that's going to be a lot of traffic, and so what I would like to see, and I think what other people would like to see, is have a brick wall fence built right there protecting our home from the vehicles on the road.
Mr. Rindley, what's the possibility of Beaton Bow or Beaton Bow doing something like that?
Mr. Hampton, I really do not think the city could compel them to do that. It may be something that the developer can work out with the individual property owners in there as a public relations gesture to do something like this, since they are extensively developing up there. And it, I can certainly forward the concerns to them and let them know that it has been stated, and there is a representative of Beaton Bow here, so they are aware of it.
Where's that person?
Bobby.
Sure, can I approach?
Yes, sure.
My name is Bobby Rickman, Representative Beaton Bow. I live at 902 K Court, so I'm actually a neighbor. I live on the corner of Evans and 91st. So I'm in the cul-de-sac right there. So I, I mean, there is already a four-way stop sign up there on Evans and 91st. The speed limit as of now is 35. Going further out toward the loop, there's going to be other stop signs as well. So the noise, traffic shouldn't be any more than it is on any other residential street. It's 35 miles an hour. It's actually a very wide roadway. It's wider than the normal 40-foot street, so I mean, it's, it should, we shouldn't have any more noise than any other street.
Is it going to be a two-lane or a four-lane?
It's four-lane.
Okay, so I mean, it's still going to have heavy traffic, more than Evans?
Well, Evans, it connects, Evans will go out, there'll be, so everybody from 385 won't be coming straight down 91st. There's other outlets going north and south, east and west down Evans.
And I mean, there's a lot of roads there, but my main concern is the way traffic is out here in Odessa. I mean, we just, I mean, there's crazy drivers out there. And so, I mean, you know, and I mean, it's just more than, more than what's normal out here. So I would really, I don't know how, I don't know how to put this or how else I can get this going, but I mean, maybe we could petition with people that already have homes in that area to get something going on like that. I mean, for like the new homes, you might be able to do that, because on 100, on some of those new homes, you're building on 100, you got to build in a cinder block wall right there? I don't know if that was just for retaining or if that was...
It's a retaining wall, yes, sir. Well, I mean, I know a lot of, say, Lubbock, they built some walls, but just because they had concrete streets, concrete streets are a little bit louder. But I've never seen a wall for noise in a residential area. I'm not saying that they don't have them, but I, you know...
Well, my favorite, something that's going to need traffic impediment anytime, vision of mine.
Randy, why don't you get with Tom, Kurt? You know, that way y'all can sit down and kind of look at it. Tom can give you the streets.
Yeah.
Information, and then we can, that way, edge K a little bit, and then we can, if you need to, we can come back to put a second reading.
Mr. Rick, is it Rickman?
Rickman, yes, sir.
Rickman, I'm sorry. Mr. Rickman, in the future, do you guys plan on working with the established residents basically to, I guess, handle some of these issues that they could possibly see, such as traffic noise?
Yeah, this is the first, you know, first time we've heard of it, but, you know, we're willing to work with whoever. You know, we're not in the business of selling homes and leaving our customers. You know, we're word of mouth a lot, you know, we don't advertise a lot, so we want to do what we can to help our homeowners.
So have you guys did that study about this community before you began building, or?
No, sir. As far as noise and stuff like that, no, sir.
But I think he said that noise wasn't that big a concern.
Correct.
Would there be some, some numbers that we could do on the road that would slow down the traffic?
Well, like I said, we have...
I think Tom Kerr would be a great source of a person to talk to about that, so...
Even if you put up, I mean, if you put more stop signs up there where you have to stop traffic from...
And you might be able to incorporate maybe some traffic volleys in the roadway also.
Some rural streets or something like that?
Well, we definitely encourage stop signs. You know, there's a lot of kids in our community, you know, but our demographic that we sell to, so we encourage as many stop signs as possible. So we have no issue with that. We actually encourage it. So we actually went to the city and asked them to put the four-way stop sign up on Evans and 91st Street. So when you go on further out, you know, we'll do the same.
Do you guys do any type of traffic studies or anything like that, or do you take that into account?
We do.
I was going to say, Mr. Hamilton, yes. I incorporate with a require from the city's traffic engineer and get his input on what he would anticipate and what we would need to do that way. So we do it on our part to kind of anticipate what's going on out there and what not being needed. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Tom.
Yeah, I want to say we'll be happy to visit with both parties and work the way to try and make sure we're preventing any safety issues and noise. We are looking at the considerations of 91st Street and how it moves east and that kind of thing. Those are things we're already trying to take into consideration. Randy's, Randy's been, and we've been talking with Randy, and so we'll find, we'll find the best solution for this situation.
If us approving this today, can I, can he?
No, we can institute a two approval.
Okay. You all just get with addresses.
And also what it will do before, let me, yeah, what we can do also is further to the east. As stated in the previous case, site plan approval is required prior to any development, and we can get all of that worked out to the east to address the future needs, and then set down for what's existing right now with Bobby, Tom, myself, and figure out what we need to do for the existing. But we can address the future through the site plan approval, and then Mr. Hamilton will be, have a little more teeth in it where we say, "In order to develop, you will have to do this."
Right.
So we can do it that way.
Well, I like that perspective. Because I don't, I don't see why this guy, this gentleman here, many of the residents here have to sit there and endure the increased traffic.
And that's probably set down whether for what's existing and then address further to the east for what could come in, and address it that way, and kind of get a heads-up on it, be ahead of it.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that, Mr. Rindley.
Also...
Well, Mr. Rindley, did P and Z discuss this at all?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
And what were their thoughts on it?
Well, this is the main thing. It's, we talked with the traffic engineering that the preliminary layout for traffic flow and pattern is adequate and be able to handle the traffic flow and the traffic that's anticipated out there. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Rindley, they're, so you're saying, they said that, but are they saying, oh, the street can just handle the traffic? Or are they looking at the residents themselves and saying, okay, how, what type of impact will this have on the residents?
They, the traffic patterns and all do take into the layout and design of the streets and the impact that it would have on the land uses out there, and the type of land use that the retail would generate from the loop coming back in, and if the streets are adequate to handle and address the traffic situations. And not at a minimum basis, but at a peak use basis.
Okay. I just don't want them, this is a bad situation where we're putting business over people.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's, no, we're, we don't do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So go get with you, and if you have any more questions, you're welcome to call me, and we're going to have another reading after this in two weeks.
In two weeks. Two weeks from today?
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me go at it like this. Well, I'll just make a motion. Shall we table this thing? And that way, that way, I think that puts a little more, hate to say the word pressure, but it puts a little bit more emphasis on getting this thing looked at, and a couple of weeks is not going to make, I mean, it may make a lot of difference for you guys up there, so... I'll make a motion. We just tabled this.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
What would we like to see during this, I mean, we table this, and I mean, we don't mind getting with the residents. We have no problem with that. I mean, that's not an issue at all, but I mean, what are we in this?
I think maybe what you're going to need to do is get with Tom and myself, and we'll figure out the best pattern if we can have for impact on corner lots and see what sort of mechanisms we can incorporate to minimize impact on property.
And I'm not going to end up being a corner property. It's just the road's going to be straight through, so now I'm just going to be on the side of one of your major, major roads.
Well, it won't be a straight through. It's, like I said, there's a current attitude, and we are in, let's say... We'll give you a call. Will you come in and sit down with Tom and myself?
When you guys decide on Tom versus me, would you give me a call and let me know? I'll submit it on that.
You got a motion in a second.
May I ask a question? Just really, just out of curiosity, make sure I understand the process itself, except, when it does go to P and Z, it also, there are cards, et cetera, et cetera, questionnaires that are sent out to the public associated with this project itself also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So everyone has an opportunity to voice concerns, et cetera, in my opinion. That's the process that we utilize as far as the P and Z committee, as well as we enter with you, your, your, Mr. Beaton Bow Rep.
Yes, sir.
How much of an imposition is this going to be on your two-to-two week wait?
I mean, I don't want to, we are, we're building five homes a week. Right now, we are, been working with the city, trying to figure out ways for us to help speed up our process. We have, you know, several, if you bought a home today, went and bought a home today, you wouldn't actually get to move in until summer of 2019 because of the waitlist. So we're, we're turning out the MP, we're fixing to start on 2021, and then as soon as we're done with 21, we'll have, we'll have four sections going on at one time. It's an inconvenience, but I mean, it's, we understand. If it's the right thing to do, I'm okay with it. I mean, we're not, I mean, like I said, we want to work with everybody. I mean, there's also, there's a second reading, and maybe we can come in and have something in between the readings. But whatever y'all want to do, I mean, we're okay with, we understand that people need to be taken care of. I mean, we don't have issue with that.
Mr. Rindley, I'm sorry, Mr. Rindley, what's the feedback on, I know, do we spoke about surveys and whatnot? What's the, what's the feedback? What, what type of percentage are you getting back? Because I know people, if they're like me, they, they work a lot of hours. And so sometimes people are not available to read some...
They're not ready for it. Yeah. In this particular case, we sent out 45 notices for the surrounding property owners.
How many did you receive back?
We had just one returned and just two returned with a comment on, and that was it.
So do you think that, do you think that means that these people are either busy, don't want to engage the city, or disconnected?
It's really, it's really kind of hard to say, because that's pretty much the feedback we get on just about everything. Nearly, just about everything on this next one we see there.
Okay.
Yeah, we thought about, I know one of the cities will put up a very large sign in the area and let people know what's... Yeah, we thought about, uh, I know why the cities uh, will put up a very large sign in the area and, and let people know uh, what's going on and where you can comment and.
Yeah, we put a.
We try that.
Yes, ma'am, we have, we started out with some very nice uh, signs that our street department made for us. Each one lasted about overnight. And then we went to uh, Kurt's expense, we went to cardboard signs. So yes, we do make every diligent effort to inform the public of what is occurring.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor of taking this, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, votes four to one, to table. Thank you, sir, and uh, please let us know, make sure that it's taken care of. Okay, item three, uh, remove from the table and open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of U-Haul. Mr. Brennerly.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could I have a motion to remove from the table?
Yes, motion, sorry.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor of removing from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's back on the table. Uh, we need to open a public considering, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by U-Haul, Mr. Brennerly.
Yes, sir. Uh, this request was tabled back at the August eighth, twenty seventeen, City Council meeting. And in order to uh, uh, inform more thoroughly adjacent property owners of this request and obtain an expanded range of response, uh, the area of notification was increased to within a six-hundred-foot radius of this uh, property. And uh, in this six-hundred-foot radius, we did receive uh, thirteen protests and three approvals. And just to be fair to everyone involved, uh, back on the, the traditional two-hundred-foot radius notification, we did receive uh, uh, two approvals and four protests in that, just information for the council. Uh, the property involved in this request is zone plan development like commercial, it's limited to its current use, and it is currently occupied by a single-story mini warehouse self-storage facility. Uh, this does contain five hundred and twenty-four total storage units. Uh, land use in the area does consist of office development, a drill site, and single-family residential development, and there is also a church south of this site. The applicant and property owner in this case is U-Haul, and uh, the purpose of the request is to amend the approved site plan of a, a five thousand one hundred and sixty-square-foot locker storage warehouse facility that does contain a hundred and nineteen units. And this was approved in case file twenty sixteen oh seven, and this would be increased by three hundred and ten percent to a footprint of uh, sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four square feet. The size of the building would be ninety-six by one seventy-six and would be approximately twenty-eight to thirty feet in height. Uh, this locker room or locker storage warehouse facility would contain two hundred and eighty-five units. Uh, the post amendment would increase the total storage capacity on the property to a total of eight hundred and nine locker units. Uh, the subject area is located in the eastern section of the city's land use map. Uh, this area is a prime area for low-density residential with limited retail development. Uh, commercial-related developments are a more intensive use and are compatible with uh, residential development only with the use of screening and buffering techniques and to mitigate any noise and light impacts on the adjacent neighborhoods. Uh, the planning staff has concerns that the proposed future use would have a significant impact on the city's priority for a high quality of life for the residents in this area. The design of the facility is more industrial in appearance. Uh, the amended site plan as proposed for the site is not consistent with the city's priority for safe roadways that are context-sensitive due to the increased size of the structure, the increase in number of storage units, and the increase in the amount of traffic that would be generated by the uses on this property. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did give the uh, approval to their request with the following conditions, uh, that the proposed structure and the site must meet the adopted design guidelines that's established with the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, the applicant would have to provide seventeen parking spaces on the property. Uh, a signage program that is, is in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance would need to be shown on the site plan. Relocate an existing sign out of a utility easement. Uh, trash collection would need to be addressed and dumpster sites would need to be shown on an approved site plan. Uh, RV parking and in conjunction with a return truck stacking area is currently placed in a utility and drainage easement, and this would need to be relocated and worked out prior to any additional development on the property. Uh, site grading plan to address drainage needs would need to be provided prior to any additional development on the property. And fifty percent of the building facade that does face Billy X Road would need to be of a masonry composition. And also adoption of the amended site plan, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I, maybe you need to explain to me something, uh, if P and Z sees all of these things that need to be corrected, why would they approve it until all that's corrected? I, I don't quite understand that theory.
Uh, they approved it on the condition that all of these would be incorporated into the site plan, the, the, the adoption or the, what they approved was, will approve this request in the site plan if you incorporate all of these things in there. And that's what we would be tasked to do as a staff, or to see that all of these things were incorporated in there.
But who's gonna see that they've been incorporated in there?
Well, as a staff, we would, and the city's code enforcement and inspection department, it'd be a joint effort between about three or four different uh, departments.
So we had any trouble with code enforcement?
Uh, there, there have been some issues at this location, yes, sir.
The parking and the easement, what, has to be won. I, I have to be upfront with thirteen protests, uh, I cannot be comfortable with this request. Especially when you're, when there's, there's uh, nothing consistent for the increased traffic, that, that is a big concern on that corner of Billy X that, and uh, East Street, et cetera, it's a busy corner.
Any other questions from council, then I'll open it up. Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward.
John Langrath, five twenty-one, North Texas, most of those items, Councilman Langrath, have been already addressed, addressed on the site plan. So uh, we have done that. You may have remembered, we brought to you originally a three-story building and we got a lot of negative vibes from the council, and you did not actually vote on it, you tabled it. We came back with a two-story, added the brick and stone facade and addressed all the site plan issues. So we felt like we uh, complied with everything P and Z asked for and took your direction. My only question was, is where, why all of a sudden do we have a six-hundred-foot radius when every P and Z notification's been two-hundred feet? And I, I think it was to increase the number of protests, but if you look at the number of, Randy, how many were sent out? It's still a very small percentage of protests, but I understand your concerns, Councilman Brown.
We had, as far as the six-hundred-foot radius, we had uh, seventy-nine were mailed out in that one. And uh, with the highest concentration, John, you can still see, even within the two-hundred-foot radius is the uh, residential district right across the street from the proposed development.
Okay, anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, at this time we both close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So move them.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, so the vote is three to two, um, and it passes. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Brennerly.
So that's only the first reading.
It's first reading. Items four and five, we have moved to the bottom of the agenda, so we will go ahead and handle resolution. Uh, item six, consider the purchase of the customer form for utility customers. Mr. Brennerly.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you well know, we've had a longstanding tradition of trying to provide citizens of Odessa an outstanding customer service and an outstanding customer experience, as we did with the AMI meters, the automated meter reading system. So, up for consideration is a customer portal that utilizes the information that is gleaned from the automated readings, reading system. Currently, our customers will call in if they have a question on their bill, if they have trouble, or if they just need some remedies to help them conserve water. This portal will provide a dashboard that allows the citizens and the customers, utility customers, to view this information and we can have an educated conversation if they wish to call in or if they wish to set the parameters and the options that are available to them online, as well as a mobile application, in which they could manage their own account. Um, anything from, it, it's, it's a very robust and integrated system which would allow them to say, I want to know what I use when it's a hundred-degree day and so forth. Uh, it, it, it gets kind of technical with them, as, as technical as they feel comfortable with. Um, it, it, we use it, we want to use it as a tool to help the customer and have an educated conversation with them as they call in and if they need additional assistance. The, the term is a five-year subscription with Water Smart, and it's for the amount of two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would include the entire subscription for that term. We've built into it as protection for the city, if at any time within the annual renewal that the city is dissatisfied with the service, we have the option of, of leaving this. So even though we, we obtained the best price because we went to the five-year, we still uh, kept the ability to, to step away from it if we, if we're not satisfied.
Mr. Brennerly, I'm sorry, what was that number again?
Two hundred and seventy-five.
Two hundred and seventy-five, yes. I'm sorry, I don't know what I said. So it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and that's for the five-year, the, the, the first year, it's uh, we plan to incorporate all our commercial customers and get this thing up and going and, which is a fairly quick process and a fairly quick turnaround. And then all the rest of the customers will come on, come on.
So in a nutshell, so customer, one of our citizens wants to know when they get thirty dollars on their water bill, they can set this up and it'll tell them.
It'll tell them. It, um, we have the ability to see what a person uses on an hourly basis. So if a person says, I've, I've got this problem, well, from three to five, something's happening within your home. They're, they now can see that same information that we're seeing, that from three to five, why am I using so much water? And they can fix it or look for the, for the issue themselves.
Okay, any questions?
How much information is gonna be made available to the citizens of Odessa to know that it's gonna be available?
Um, on the onset, we will start a public campaign and uh, have, talk to Andrea and we're, we're gonna make it public and really push it out. And, as well as using our own department, as they call in, incorporated into our script.
Could we send a letter out to each person explaining what's going on?
Yes, ma'am, that, that sure is a possibility, we can do that.
Mr. Brennerly, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I don't have a question, I've got a comment. I, it just so happened that uh, my last water bill spiked a tremendous, a tremendous amount. And I, I had kind of seen a little bit of it from the month before, but not enough, I did, it was during Christmas and I'm like, well, when I got my last one, I knew I had a problem because my water usage has been the same, I, I like the meters, I know we had some trouble in the beginning, but I can tell you they're, they're, they're accurate and they, 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 they tell you what you're using.
They sure have.
And, and anyway, so my, my water bill jumped uh, tremendous, it probably tripled in the, the amount that I used. So the first place I always look is out in my water software and my, and my RO unit. Sure enough, my water software just sitting there just shooting a stream of water out, so I shut it down, look at it. Well, just so happens, this is when we, this is the time of year that we, we, we pay the sewer, you know, what you're using is, is built into that. I, I know I'll be able to go, I, I, I'm gonna cut you and we're gonna visit, we're gonna visit about the deal, but.
Yes, sir.
But had, had that tool been available, it's, it's probably about a ninety-nine percent chance that I would have caught that thing ahead of time before it, before it got that. Because if you can set that on, if you get close to the usage each month that you're gonna be using, and the twentieth of the month, you hit that mark, you know you got a problem somewhere. And, and so I, I very much so advocate doing this deal.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great, I think it would be a great tool for us, it'd be a great tool for, I mean, we, we all watch our, watch what we spend, watch what we pay, a lot of us do, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you would have received a text if we were on this large smart.
I think it's a good deal, so.
Any other question?
Now, you said this was for five years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then what are we looking for after the five years, do you have any idea?
No, uh, we would, at that time, or even before, we would just see if this is really what we want or if there are enhancements. Uh, since technology is just grows by leaps and bounds, though. It, at, at the, maybe four, four years, we'd start looking around and researching and see if this is the best way the city of Odessa needs to go.
Good, that's, that's what I hope that you would say.
Okay, I will entertain the motion.
Go through the second.
The motion in the second, any more discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, and answered. Thank you, Mr. Brennerly. Uh, next, consider awarding and approving a contract for the aquatic facilities operations with Odessa YMCA, Mr. Patton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm excited about the limited amount of relatives that can visit me on the, um, most now, I don't know how many times to flush, I've reached my quota, I'm like, sister, sorry, next month.
That's thirty seconds, Mr. Patton.
Man, big brothers watching. All right, we had uh, official notification from C O M Aquatics that they no longer wanted to operate our pools, manage our pools, and they did a fantastic job for fifteen years, and uh, their organization is growing, their facilities are growing, and their programs are growing. So they couldn't really uh, spend the time and the dedication that they have in the past with our program. With the official notification, we went out with an RFP process, and through that process, we recruited three people, uh, through different entities to uh, operate our swimming pools. That would be American Pool Aquatics Solutions out of Alfredo, Georgia, United Pool Management out of Roswell, Georgia, and the Odessa YMCA. And with that, uh, the proposals that we received, we reviewed those, we had a subcommittee of the Park Immigration and Budget Board along with staff. We reviewed those proposals and with those proposals, we made a recommendation. Before doing that recommendation and uh, and the, the evaluation process that we had, determined that Ed Marino, the YMCA, came out on top. Uh, the best value for the city of Odessa, they're local, and they have a program to teach Larry how to dog paddle, so it's really a good thing. So Ed's here to talk on behalf of the YMCA and anything that you'd like to say about the program and what you plan to do with the program.
Good evening, uh, well, number, number one, we feel it's a great opportunity uh, to partner with the city. It's something the YMCA has always tried to do, always be at the table and say, you know, uh, that's something that we feel is, is great of. What we have with us and what we bring to the table is we're one of the largest uh, swim lesson providers in Odessa. Uh, we have, we, last year we had over two hundred kids participate in our swim lessons. Uh, we have two certified pool operators on staff. Uh, we have another staff member who also uh, is a lifeguard instructor, so that's always been an issue, is getting these kids certified to be lifeguards. And we have that in-house and it's part of our staff. So we feel we're well-equipped and again, we feel that it'd be a great honor and privilege to better uh, impact this community with this partnership.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, if not, I will entertain the motion.
Second.
The motion in second, any more discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, and answered. Thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. For sure, again, thank you all for, for hearing, for hearing us and giving us that opportunity.
Thank you. I'd make a considerable resolution entering into a professional service agreement with Board of Oak Law Firm, E.C., and the provision of municipal law services. Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable council members. Uh, what you have before you is a contract for legal services. Uh, what you have before you is a contract for legal services. As council knows, our long-serving city attorney, Larry Long, will be retiring at the end of this month. Uh, council approached the city manager to explore their options. As council knows, the, it is your prerogative to appoint a city attorney. It is also your prerogative to contract for legal services. Mr. Marrero talked to several organizations that provide legal services. Many cities in Texas have never had a city attorney, uh, some, including some large ones. Right now, the city attorney for the city of Amarillo is, for example, is a attorney under contract to provide them services. And as I said, many cities have never had a city attorney. Sometimes they have city attorneys temporarily under contract and at other times appointed. Mr. Marrero talked to several people who are experts in this area. He received some proposals. He asked me to analyze them. I did that. I also did some additional research into the practices of other cities, other legal fees generally. And we came up with a decision that the best proposal that we came from was the Bahorchquist firm, which is also known as Texas Municipal Lawyers. Uh, and that is the contract that you have before you this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Yeah. Is the person here for us to talk to?
I don't believe we have anybody. No, they're not here this evening.
Then I move that we table this.
Or did the personnel committee talk to the individuals?
No. And I, I don't want to do that until we talk to, I mean...
Go ahead. We can start to do whatever council wishes.
I move that we table this.
At the end of the day, I mean, when we talked about it, it was to bring in somebody that was going to help us to have legal advice if we needed it.
That's correct.
Um, the last meeting that we had was, it was supposed to have sent us a resume about the individual that was going to come. And what we were supposed to go on today was for y'all to pursue and, and go ahead and hire this individual. But it's not necessarily the individual that we're hiring. We're hiring the firm that has many people on the team that is actually, can come and provide the service that we need here.
That's correct. We participated in some telecom conversations with the managing general partner of this particular firm, as well as some of their senior partners. Uh, actually, at this point, several of their potential senior partners have been proposed. Uh, it may very well be that more than one would end up being interviewed to help, hopefully that we can find the right fit.
But it is a firm to grab from. Were not the resumes in doubt to the last final?
Yes.
Did you not have those?
We had several resumes and they were handed out. And we, we convened the personnel committee and the presentation was made to the personnel committee. Uh, and then following that, we convened the finance committee and that was also there.
Yes. If we do have a motion on the floor, council Hamilton to table it.
Right. Well, can we, please talk into the room a bit?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
My, my understanding was that we would have a firm, a person, uh, for a very short period of time because we only have two current lawyers. We will only have two current lawyers where we've had four in that office and, and only have a person there for a short period of time until we can go out and open up the positions so that people can, can apply for that. To me, we've got a lot of questions to answer and ask before we would sign a contract, I think.
Well, one of the things that was said was you wanted to make sure that a firm was hired so they could come in and visit with Larry and work with Larry. And so we pushed it.
Why is this last minute, though? This should have been done the day that, the day that...
Not last minute, sir. It's been going on for the last month. This has been on for a month. It was heard the last, the last finance council, which was a decision at that time that let's move quickly to move them here. I believe that the authority was given to Mr. Marrero, et cetera, to get them here. When we could start dialogue with Mr. Long since his timeframe is, isn't it, is numbered, so therefore it was important that we got someone here to start the dialogue and the process from that step.
Right.
So why didn't we start the process today that we understood that Larry would be moving on?
We had the approval now. This was brought to the finance.
You didn't answer the question, actually. So because we got the approval now. Larry, Larry actually stated that he would be moving on months ago.
We got a motion.
So now we wait to the last minute, last month, to all of a sudden move? And we have not even had an opportunity to really sit down and speak with these people only because we just looked at a resume? Just doesn't make sense.
Well, we, we have not talked to him, but you have talked to him, right, in the firms?
Yes.
And you, you made an honest, in my opinion, an honest assessment of the situation that you had between the two people that wanted to do this and, and we gave you the authority to...
Well, actually, when we looked at this as a personnel committee and brought both those proposals to you.
Yes, yes.
It was the personnel committee that selected to go with this particular group.
After we have listened to y'all and, and...
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we table?
I, I just thought the person would be here for us to talk to. My, I, I even asked Larry if we'd go into executive session to, to quiz the person to see if we're happy with it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Is, uh, is this contract, I mean, binding, I mean, today, I mean, but if, let's say we do talk to him and we don't like him, we can get rid of him a month from now or...
Yes. The contract can be ended immediately. Okay? It's built into the contract. It's baked in. You can, you can cancel it at any time.
We have a motion to table it. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Here we have a motion to second. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Tabling fails. Make a motion and we approve the contract as presented. Tabling, a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And motion to approve it. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Uh, motion passes, three to two. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, unmiscellaneous, Mr. Baller.
Okay. Uh, for the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District, reappoint Chris Lortes, Thomas Blackstone, and Amanda Rogers.
Okay.
So, man.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we move to item four, consider calling the order and ordering special election on May 5th, 2018 to amend the city of Odessa charter. Uh, we have two citizens who would like to speak. David Butein.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm speaking on behalf of calling the special election for May 5th. The, my understanding is that there's a petition, valid petition, legal petition's been submitted and that the council is mandated to call for the election. Uh, in my opinion, to have two readings which would push the election back is illogical to apply, uh, since there's really no question in the fact that you have to call the election. Uh, I think you ought to give the voters the opportunity to decide this issue as soon as possible. And that would be May 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butein. Um, the last card I have is Drew Crutcher.
Mr. Mayor and councilman Drew Crutcher, 10 Amathusco, Odessa. Uh, I'm one of the volunteers that's been working on the petition drive. We've gotten a huge number of, numbers of petitioners, approval of the election. I think most of them's understanding that it would be as soon as possible. That would be May. I think it's precedent for that to happen. Uh, I think it's a good thing for the city. It gives more representation and many other things that we could go into, but we respectfully request that the council approve that election to be called in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crutcher.
I'd like to add a couple of comments if I may.
Sure.
I think it's extremely important that, number one, we look to somewhat the history of this event itself. There was an opportunity and it was expressed as an amended agenda item by the, by the voting public that we put our December 12, 2017 agenda that we're allowed to, to take it to a vote for the public to elect a member-at-large as, as well as, as a voting mayor. And that would be on the ballot May 5th, 2018. That was turned down, but there were three opportunities after that for that to either be read again or to be approved again. And that was in January 9th, January 23rd, and, and today, February 13th. I think the irony of this thing is that, that, that process was from the date that it was brought to this council, which was December 12, 2017. It was 38 days to the date that it could have been voted on the second time or read the second time, which was January 9th. Therefore, without being able to be taken to a vote, it was given to them that you're out to get the petitions. The petition started December 31st. They were handed in February 2nd. That's 43 days. In 43 days, we had 2,757 people sign that they would like this election held May 5th, 2018. This represents nearly 40% of the number that voted in the, in November 7th, 2017 election, which was for the school board election, the school bond, excuse me. I think this definitely represents the fact that the public is concerned with the preservation of the public business. They consider citizens, they're concerned citizens for the public disagreement on the council's actions, very demonstrated with the results of the petition.
Okay. Other comments?
I want to make a comment on the fact that about a year and a half ago, we had a similar situation that came about where Mr. McNeil's seat came empty. And we had people from District One come in and with a signed petition, including Mr. Hamilton, demanding that we placed Mrs. Joanne Devonford. Why, what's the difference now? I mean, we had people that represented it, you know, over 250 people signed that petition, you know, in my eyes, I thought, okay, who's going to speak for the other 20,000 people that live in that district? We, I, I don't believe in that now and I don't believe in that in today because, you know, it's the same thing what's happening now. Uh, yes, we have some people that signed the petition. Yes, they did what they were supposed to do, but they missed the deadlines. They had some inadequate people that didn't do their homework on when they were supposed to turn in their, the petition. Why is it the, the city council's fault? It is, it is what it is, you know? Do not, District One constituents have any rights for representations? Do they not have the, the right to be heard also of what happened on that day? Why didn't you vote for it, Mike? Why didn't you vote for it? Do we, that's what the community wanted. They came in here demanding the same, no different than Jim Rector and, and the other people, the Drainless Swamp, wanting.
And you voted against it, though.
I know. I voted against it. I'm voting against it now.
So why are you...
Because I'm making a point of the fact that why is it that they are, uh, they were okay to say no to that public from District One and we're...
That wasn't to hold a special election.
It was the same thing. There was people...
Not the same.
It is the same thing. It is the same thing.
All right. Hold it down. Please don't interrupt each other. You talk at will. Go ahead, Mike, we, council member, governor.
No, I just, you know, the chips fall where they fall. Let them, let them go. The voters, the, the petition was signed, it's within the 78 days. But it's regulated by state law. Uh, emergency, uh, emergency elections have been called for in the past, it's been done by this council, uh, or past councils, uh, two, three times. And, you know, if the, if, if the voters in Odessa say, "No, we don't want this," then, then they'll vote, "No, we don't want to have a, we don't want to do that." But, but they have spoken and said, "Let's, let's have the election, lay the fist." I, I don't know why we would, would not want to do that. I, I can't see a reason why we would. There's no reason in my mind that we would want to put it on.
Who's going to speak for the other 120,000 people?
They'll speak when they hear the poll and...
They'll speak when they vote.
They're only given one choice, Mike.
They're only given one choice.
No, they're not going to vote. Yes, sir. They can vote no. They can vote no. They don't want to, they don't want to...
Right now, I'll call the order. I just called the order. And it's my job to call the order.
Yes, sir. Just do it.
Okay.
Well, I, I would like to speak. Yes, they were able to do the petition, uh, to get the petition. And yes, the law says that we shall. When the law uses the word "shall," there is no legal ring, you have to do it. Well, I want to read first of all to you our city charter. Because we have to look at the Texas Local Government Code, we have to look at our charter, we also have to look at the Texas Constitution, and you need to look at the election laws because they all have to be followed. When you read our city charter, section 61, which is about ordinances and the enactment of, it says, "Each proposed, proposed ordinance or resolution shall be introduced in writing or printed form and shall not," yet that "shall not" contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in the title, except ordinances or resolutions making appropriations or authorizing the contracting of indebtedness or issuance of bonds or other evidence of indebtedness. No ordinance, unless it be declared an emergency measure, shall be passed finally on the date it is introduced, but must be passed, read, and voted upon at two regular meetings of the city council. Now you go down to section 62, which is titled, "Emergency Measures Defined." An emergency measure is an ordinance or resolution for the immediate preservation of the public business, property, health, or safety, or providing for the usual daily operation of a municipal department in which the emergency is set forth, and such ordinances or resolutions appropriating money to defray current or expenses of the city. It may be passed as an emergency measure, but no ordinance or resolution making a grant, renewal, or extension of a franchise or other special privileges or regulating the rate of rates to be charged for the services furnished to the public generally by any public utility shall ever be passed as an emergency measure. I don't see where we can pass it on an emergency measure by our own charter. Now, you come to, let me find it here, the Local Government Code. I spent hours researching this.
Well, I agree. Now, we do have legal counsel. I've just got curious if there was something along his line.
Okay. The Local Government Code, if you will look at section nine, particularly at 9.004, you look at part B. The ordinance ordering the election shall provide for the election to be held on the first authorized uniform election date presented by the election code or on the earlier of the date of the next municipal general election or presidential general election. The election date must allow sufficient time to comply with the other, uh, re, uh, requirements of law and must occur on or after the 30th day after the date the ordinance is adopted. Now you can go on down to section three, uh, part B, and it says, "An amendment may not contain more than one subject," and he says, "The ballot..." and E says, "The ballot shall be prepared so that the voter may approve or disapprove any one or more amendments without having to approve or disapprove all of the amendments." Okay, I can go on and read you stuff from the, uh, Texas Constitution, from the election law, but it's pretty obvious that we have a problem. There are two subjects on that ordinance. You've got to, in order to put it on the ballot, it's gotta be one subject on each one. That means the mayor on one, it means the at-large on the other. It also tells us that we have a choice, we don't have to do it.
We, the council, or?
Yeah, you're interrupting me, Dewey.
Well, I was asking a question, can I ask you a question?
No, I'm not through.
Oh, let's keep talking.
We have a choice, you know, that we can make. Also, if you put it on the May election, you're putting a tremendous burden on the elections office. I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, but those ladies worked on Saturday, they worked after hours, and they're not being paid for it. I think they're just getting comp time. What is the big rush, why it has to be, you think, in May? What's happening? Why do you have to do it in May? Why can't you follow the law? I'm a person, I'm gonna follow the law. I'm not one of these people that's gonna say, well, you know what, we'll just do it anyway, and hopefully, we won't get sued. I don't think that's very responsible.
Councilmember Ryan, do you have a question?
I don't know how to address it, I have pretty few questions, I, I, I just don't understand the fact of what is the pressure, what is the time? You forced the citizens to get a petition. We, this council, forced the citizens to get a petition. They got a petition. They got a petition that again represented nearly forty percent of the number that voted in the last school bond election. I can go back to other elections, and it was a hundred and eighty-eight percent of what voted with the petition that was signed. Is that not the voice of the public? Is that not what we're about? Is that not what this country was founded on, or is it?
Do you follow the voice of the people, or do you follow the law? I think we're here to follow the law. Yes, you're following the voice of the people, but it is up to us. And, and I, I will tell you another thing, they could have met that deadline if they had listened to our city secretary, if they had listened to our legal counsel, because repeatedly, they were told, no, that is not the law, you're, you need to do it this way, and Mr. Rector would continually argue with them, and no, he thought he knew. Well, I think he owes an apology to all people assigned the petition, because he should have followed what they told him was the law.
Was the presentation on December twel-, with, and this is a question I'd like to ask Mr. Long, if I may, was the presentation on December twelfth to be voted on by the council? Was there sufficient time for the next reading, if it should have been passed on January ninth, for this to be held in May?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Well, I'll say this. Odessa has shown me a lot here lately, you know, once upon a time when I was a kid, growing up, playing Birmingham football, like most kids want, I guess I thought different about Odessa. And you would hear adult conversations about situations like this. And now that I'm older, I see that those people were right. The more we say we change, the more we stay the same. And if anyone could look me in my face directly and tell me that you're doing this for the greater good of Odessa instead of your own self-interest, then yeah, I would go along with this. However, you're not. You're upset because we did something that you didn't like, possibly because of self-interest, not because of the greater good of Odessa. So, going back to some of the things that we said previously, you, we are taking taxpayers' money into the city, yet we're only incentivizing companies to develop in certain areas. That is absurd. Your dollar is no more important than the next man's dollar, or penny, or nickel, or dime. So, until, until we, and I believe I spoke to you about this today earlier, Mike, correct? Mayor? Yes, we spoke about this, yeah. That, this is like a ship. We are going to capsize the ship should we continue down this line, and you must understand that. Stop putting your self-interest, stop putting business over people. This is not about a Hispanic thing, this is not about a black thing, this is not about a white thing, this is about a dollar thing. And regardless, if you really wanna get technical about it, in my district, and I'm just speaking about my district, in my district, I have a large percentage of voters, I have a large percentage of retired individuals who have already put into the pot. We owe it to them to give them fair representation by developing within that area. Yet, we wanna sit here and we want to utilize every excuse down the road to practice an old, ancient, the oldest trick in the book, this gerrymandering, this, this, um, at-large, uh, voting block, which basically, if you have a large percentage of people in your district who vote, well, they can control the whole board. So what is it? You're gonna retake the board back so you can continue with the rubber stamping of your projects? This is very upsetting to me, and I'm, not only am I disappointed with a lot of people, but I have lost what respect I have for you. Period. Simply because you're sitting here parading around as an outstanding citizen or businessperson, yet you are... You're taking people's money. I don't, I don't care if it's white collar crime, blue collar crime, crime is still crime. You're taking people's money and you're not showing them anything in return. You're, you're going elsewhere, you, you, you're going over here, we're going over there, and we make every single excuse to do so. But I have a lot of people in my district who are elderly, who are retired, and these people are on fixed income. At the end of the day, they have to make a decision, because inflation is here, Dewey, you're a banker, correct? So, you understand? Inflation here, and now they have to make a decision on whether I could buy that half a gallon of milk or try to eat my medication. And you're taking their dollar every single day, and you have no problems about it. So, if there was some type of truth behind this, maybe, or perhaps, I would be with this. I really would, but I'm not for this whatsoever, everyone understands that, and you guys know that this is wrong, and I will have no parts of it.
So, okay, who are you calling? It's crime, you said, explain that crime.
The crime, the crime of simply coming up here, getting your projects rubber stamped, which you've obviously done for years. I mean, if you wanna look at the city, let's be honest. The proof is in the pudding. I could see if actually everything else matched, and I appreciate you advocating for them, uh, David, because you're kinda showing your hand there.
No, sir, I'm asking you a question, defend what you.
And I'm, I, I, I don't have to defend.
I have.
I don't have to.
I think we're going along with it all, come on.
So, you're, 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 you're sitting here saying that we are incentivizing companies, like we had, we had a discussion today, did we not? We had a discussion that said that, yeah, if we're, it's kinda like your mother, when your mother gives you money, uh, there's some stipulations, there's some stipulations that goes with that, I am on topic.
The discussions for the election, so.
For the election.
And you've already, you've addressed that quite publicly, so.
Oh, Larry, so you finally wanna speak up? Wow, really? So, as I was saying, you, you asked a question. Will you call for the question? Yeah, you just said, you said call for the question.
I'm waiting for you to finish.
Yeah.
I'd like to take out one point, though.
After I finish, I appreciate it.
Well, you stand and talk.
So, anyhow, as you were asking, right? We're sitting here, we talked, we spoke about, hey, if mom gives you money, there's some stipulation that goes with that, and we spoke about the possibility of, hey, we need to stick within our goals of what we wanna do within the city. We spoke about that, did we not, Mike? Did we not speak about it, sir?
How does this stay on the election?
How do we not, do we not speak about this, sir?
How does this stay on the election?
So, well, I mean, it's the same, it's the same subject, it's the same subject we've been talking about for weeks and weeks and weeks as we've met.
It's not even about the election, Malcolm.
Okay, all right.
So, a couple of questions have been called.
Yeah.
Call for a question.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, consider calling and ordering a special election on May fifth to amend the city of Odessa's city charter by statute, one at-large member. Position to the city council and title of the mayor to vote upon all matters considered by the council. I would ask that this be the first and final approval for this. I would ask it to be along the lines that I believe that this does exhibit the petition that we had signed, that the public is concerned with the preservation of the public business of the city, as well as the circumstances with public disagreement on the council's actions.
All right, motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, the vote goes down three to two. Item two, I mean, item five, consider calling and ordering a special election from November sixth, two thousand eighteen. Any other motions, we have a second.
Second.
May I have some questions on this, and that's regards?
Sure.
Larry, if I may, uh, in this special election that they are looking at, and on the, we are looking at, excuse me, on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, that does mean that, uh, those running for the at-large will be able to run between now and November? Uh, will they be able to be candidates for that at-large position that we're voting for at that time?
My reading of the state law says yes, they would.
So, at this time between now and that November election, those that would like to, um, enter to that position may do so, with the proper procedures that's followed by a normal election.
Yes.
Also, that, uh, position will be a two-year period, is that not correct, with twenty twenty being the, uh, the, uh?
No, we have to decide that.
Who's weak?
The council. The council.
Yeah, and that's one reason for not rushing this, is we've got a lot of decisions that we need to make.
Okay, for a second, if I may, when this was brought to the council on December twelfth?
We turned it down.
Yesterday was normal.
But the motion that was in there, and the, and the information that was provided to us, mentioned that that was a two-year term until twenty twenty.
They can say whatever they want, they...
This is not the, this is the attorney, this is what we got in our agenda.
Larry, what's, what was on that one?
What was on there was exactly that, it was for a two-year term, that was to bring up to the four-year, uh, term, uh, that we try to run by. In other words, we have elections every two years, part of the council is elected, half of them are elected during one two-year term, and the other half, and then elected to four-year terms. So, every two years, you, you try to run.
Thank you, Larry, and I apologize, I guess the only question here is, do the cities, do the citizens really have anything that they can do or say in this city?
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, uh, Larry, don't we need, as a council, to sit down and formally write these things up? That was a suggestion from a lawyer, a lawyer that also told you, this is the law, but you know what? Uh, if you don't wanna file, you can go do that, and maybe you won't get caught, the state might not catch you, but, but the government will.
This is genuine.
Anyway, Larry, uh, what do we need to do?
Well, I, I do agree, there was, there was not a great deal of detail, as there typically isn't in, in this type of a procedure. And the council does need to make some decisions regarding, uh, the terms and, and that sort of thing, if you wish, but, I mean, we're pretty well stuck with two and four-year terms, I mean, so it's just gonna be, um, pretty elementary. The state law provides that you can run, interestingly enough, uh, for something before it's even voted in, if there is viewed as a likelihood that it will pass.
Okay, other questions? If not, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson, did you vote?
What is this, what are we voting for?
Uh, November sixth, two thousand eighteen. It's just being moved to November.
Aye.
Okay, uh, vote is three to two, uh, ordinance on first approval. Uh, there are no more items on our agenda, the meeting is dismissed.